The water treatment plant. Uh, for, for your drinking water, which is, is definitely, you know, more important to human health. Although I hate seeing a wastewater plant, uh, not in good condition either and not up to snuff. But knowing the high level of repairs needed to the distribution system that have been well documented in the papers and things like that. But y'all lost water in 2019. Um, but knowing that someone had to come in and do the basic sampling and it, and at least get an idea. This first proposal went out. Not wanting to take responsibility for any repairs at all. There's too many, they can't be done. And I know it sounds like maybe I'm throwing somebody on the bus, I'm not. This situation is guaranteed by the lack of staffing these plants have. There is no way one person or two people even could manage three different plants. It's not possible. Um, and so given that we are two people, we definitely also need to limit our scope to focus on what was the most important, which is getting this stuff written down and trying to get all your reports in and trying to keep you guys in, in drinking water. So when we were finally given the keys, unfortunately, the previous operator was not able to make that meeting. Uh, we were given the keys by Corinne and we went up to Lamborn Plant. We had toured it, we had toured it before, there was a foot of water in the back. There were numerous leaks that couldn't be identified just by walking through because there's so many that until you start to plug some up, you don't know where the other water is coming from. So when we finally, finally got in there, um, the chlorine level had been turned down to an illegal level by the previous operator. Um, I don't know why, I don't know if it was short on chlorine or an accident, I don't know. But that will show up as a violation for you all probably in the January M O R report. From the get-go, we were like, there's no way we can handle all these repairs. We are not electricians, we are not excavators, we are not, um, pipe fitters. We are, we are, we're, we're not construction workers and you don't want to pay our rates for those kinds of services, quite frankly. But pretty quick, the repair calls started coming in and needs for urgent repairs. Uh, started to become apparent. And so we did respond. For example, half an hour of the time that, that was out of scope on repairs was a pump down in the wastewater treatment plant that had gone. Uh, on our first visit there, we saw that it was quite bad, but there were not sufficient spare parts in stock to fix it. One of the first things Josh did was order those spare parts. But before he could get them and get it replaced, because there's so many things to do. Uh, the pump finally went south and you guys had a, a chlorine exceedance discharge to the river, which will show as an exceedance in your January report, because the thiosulfate that kills the chlorine, that's the pump that went bad. So the chlorine just went out. So I think, you know, I, I, I understand some concern about us coming back and asking for additional money. I understand probably a lot of concern with the amount of money to begin with. Um, we are trying to be responsible and that's part of the reason we, we're not doing repairs. Then we'd have to contract an excavator, you guys have those people, we just need to tell them what needs fixed. But unfortunately, some of those fixes couldn't wait. Or some of them could be done really quickly and some of them take engagement, um, on Josh's part. And Josh and I have had some conversations about what our scope actually is, believe me. And that it wasn't supposed to be a lot of repairs that he was getting calls to participate in. Um, from the town of Peonia, um, Public Works Department and Corinne and others. But I think it's necessary that he have some ability to comment and potentially direct reparations. He's the one now with the most experience in your system. Um, he's the one that's trying to make it go and go according to the rules. Uh, and so with that and see, seeing how many repairs he's being called on, I, I did let Corinne know, I want a change order in front of you all. And, uh, I appreciate your time in considering it. I imagine y'all might have a lot of questions. Um, and one thing I wanted to suggest is that, um, the town or even other concerned town, townspeople, come and look at the plants and understand them. I think the great, the best thing that could come out of all of this is an increased awareness of your water security and your obligations as a town and as board members, as future board members, as interested citizens. That that will help keep things running smoothly into the future, once they're corrected. Because, um, I, I read in several papers, oh, you run these plants, it takes like 20 hours a week. It takes people time employees to run the plant and it's going to take more to fix them. And I think that J D S Hydro also said that a few months ago, so, um, I would really love to, to help the board, the town, the citizens engage and understand the value uh, of this resource and help maintain the assets that makes fresh drinking water possible. You know, like 80% of people in the world don't have water delivered to their house like we do, and there's a reason for that. It takes a lot of coordination and it takes, um, to make it safe, it, it, it takes constant attention. So I guess I would love to open it up to any questions you guys might have for me, I'm sure there's a lot.
Okay, thank you, Brianna, questions from the board? Okay.
You guys are up here, that's why I'm looking up.
All right, Tammy.
So yeah, kind of like, where do you begin? I think that the discussion about the larger picture is we need that discussion to take place in a completely different area. Um, but I think what we're lacking is just like, what are the, what are the, um, the repairs that need to be made to justify the extra $7,200? What, what are we looking at specifically? I don't think we really see that in this.
Uh, I can start with my first question. Sure, I did send all of my hours with detailed time comments, um, in some typical information I prepare with every invoice that I send, I always send detailed time comments. So you guys are free to read those, Corinne has them. I have not yet sent the invoice, but that's going to be forthcoming. And I have not included the change order in the invoice because it's out of scope. If you approve the change order, I'll include it, if not, uh, lose money. But that's my project management problem, I should have come sooner and I should have caught sooner that this work was happening and was not in scope. Um, and then very forceful about it. However, so, uh, so the, to start, the first repair that's in there is, uh, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'm pretty sure this is the first repair, was when we took over the plant, the alarms had been disabled, all of them. So there was no notice if anything was flooding in the plant. And it had flooded many, many times, causing a lot of damage in the past. So, uh, the first thing we did is we turned up the flooring to the legal level and then we turned on the alarms. And those alarms went off multiple times an hour, all night long, for three nights in a row. At that point, it was a holiday weekend. Um, they were mostly nuisance alarms, but if you turn off all the alarms and there's a flood, then you don't know which is the nuisance and which isn't. So the first fix was calling Filter Tech to have them log into the system to correct the nuisance alarms, that's the first one. There's numerous distribution system calls. As you guys, I'm sure you're all aware, you guys have a lot of water disruptions in the past couple of weeks. So many times Josh was by himself at the plant and called and asked to look in on those. There are no standards written for how one would repair your, your pipelines, so that's what's something that has to be addressed from engineer. Uh, another repair was the one that I described with the chlorine pump. Where, or not the chlorine pump, excuse me, it's the thiosulfate pump, the sodium thiosulfate that neutralizes the chlorine, so that doesn't damage the macroinvertebrates in the river. Uh, that salphate pump that prevents that damage to life in the river had, um, failed. It was functioning in the morning, it was not functioning at 4:45 in the afternoon when I went down there. And so I repaired them. So that the, that we could call the state the next day with, to report the violation as required. So there's a daily maximum violation of the permit. And, uh, and tell them it was already corrected. So I came back the next morning, chlorine was back down to acceptable level at the outfall. And we, we called with Corinne and Josh called the state about it. Um, would you like me to continue? You do have a full list in front of you, or hopefully in front of you, if it's not in front of you, it can be.
So I guess I was just misunderstanding, I thought it was what needed to be done, but this is already done, is that correct? This is, this work is already done.
Some of this stuff is already done, there is a very, very long and unimaginably expensive list of things that need to be done. Um, Josh's input on that is, I think, critical, but it should be, because there are no standards written, it needs to be at an arm's length of, hey, this is what I'm seeing when he's talking to the people doing the repairs. But he can't, we can't take full responsibility to repairs, we're, we're, we are simply not electricians, we are not excavators, we, we don't have those tools, we don't have those skills, what we have is a world-class operator. And, and I hope that we can keep him interested in Peonia, he really is like, it's like watching art, watching him on a plant, he's really good at it. Talking to boards, not his thing.
Yes, Paige.
Um, I, I wondered if, um, you said you had to call Filter Tech and we did receive in this packet that Corinne has also been talking to Filter Tech. Could you, um, very specifically explain how long Filter Tech has been helping? Who exactly they are? And, and then secondly, I'm just putting this out to Corinne for the next board meeting. Um, I believe we made a motion at the last board meeting to see the reports from S S G, um, previous ones and those current ones, so I, I'm hoping that those reports are in the agenda packet in the absence of knowing, so.
That's what I was talking about earlier, yeah.
Okay, thank you, so Brianna, I'll, I'll get off and if you can tell us about, um, Filter Tech.
I'm going to start with the last first, there has not been yet a report from S S G, because we've only been involved in billing and had access to the site for two weeks. Um, we are working on it and I built a matrix that I will continue to share that is intended to be a tool to guide the town, is, is the audit, is here's the list. Um, and it has with it, um, rationale for why it's important, how urgent it is, and a status column so that it can be tracked as the necessary other entities become involved. So that in terms of our deliverables, there's only one deliverable that's actually going to be a deliverable and everything is draft until that comes out, is, we're working on it, it should be really soon. Um, Filter Tech has been involved longer than us, Filter Tech designed the plant. I'm sure that there are people on this call, like Corinne, that know more about Filter Tech than I do. Um, they designed the plant, they service the software that allows for remote monitoring of the plant, so you don't have to have people onsite 24/7, because then you're talking six people that you would need to run them. Uh, and they do the calibration work for the instruments that are sensing whether there's a chlorine problem or not, things like that. Um, I don't know the ins and outs of Filter Tech's contact with the town. That's what I know about Filter Tech, I know they were out yesterday looking at the, uh, skid tube leak and pump issue, valve issue. Um, and I, uh, I know that they would be the first people, we recommended, we, Josh recommended them, and there's a reason, it's their plant, it's their system, and they can work on it for less than we would with the right skill sets, they probably have an electrician of their own.
They do. So, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Um, so yes, onsite yesterday was Deb Jensen and Chris Shotten. Deb Jensen is the one who actually designed our plant. Um, she, they're the engineering firm, uh, Brianna gave an accurate description of what they did. Uh, they do have crews that do support and repairs on the plants that they design. Um, they did have the crew out doing and I asked them to come out and assist doing basically their own audit of their system, taking a look at what they've designed and what they also see um, as things that they can assist with repairs and what that cost would be. Um, Deb, I've also provided Deb the, uh, matrix that I received today from Brianna and they are going through that matrix of repairs that Josh and Brianna have seen onsite to, um, come back and let us know, yes, this is what our repair crews can provide and what timeline that would take and what that cost would be. Um, so again, when I say that I'm including reports from Brianna, it is not the deliverable that was outlined, it's the, just the communications, that's the information they've also, um, requested to see Brianna, so they'll see that matrix even though it is a draft.
Great.
Um, and, um, and I'll provide them the updates as well that I've worked on, like lock changes and things like that that aren't updated on it. So, um, that's who, uh, Filter Tech is, they are very involved. I'm also, um, in communication with J D S and with, um, and so that of course would be Doug and, um, and James, the two individuals with J D S Hydro that we have, you've met and have been working on our project. And, um, Brandon Bear with S G M, who's been the primary engineer for the town for several years, the, the one we've contracted with. They're all reviewing the, um, list that are, that, uh, has come out from S S G as well as reviewing other documents related to our long-term search for, um, a contract O R C. Um, and I'm also working on the staffing portion for people specific to the water wastewater system and, um, that's moving along pretty well, actually, so.
Okay, other questions from the board? Yes, Paige.
Um, Corinne, I was wondering if you can give us an, uh, a general idea of how much has been spent to date o- over and above, um, the work order with S S G? Kind of a ballpark?
I, I can't tell you specific to S S G, but I actually had Cindy Poole, a report for the water stuff that we've done for the year in my staff, but I didn't, I don't know the number offhand, but I'll look for that while, um, while Brianna talks a little bit more. Um, Filter Tech is just starting to send in information, I haven't gotten any estimates yet.
And that's what I meant.
Yes.
I was wondering about Filter Tech and, um, the additional work that, uh, I'm sure it's not free to talk to J D S and S G M about the big picture, so I'm kind of curious. Uh, and I only bring it up because Travis's, everything, his salary and all his benefits and taxes was $113,000. So I'm kind of curious how close we are to that in terms of, um, having, you know, a set of, uh, funding that we already had agreed to. How much, we're going over that and that is certainly another conversation, thank you.
Absolutely, I can tell you right now that J D S and S G M, um, have been, uh, stepping up and providing advice because they understand the situation and they have not, um, there has not been any additional billing required for that, um, assistance. Everyone really has stepped up and, and realizes that unfortunately, the situation we're in is bigger than, uh, we were aware of and are, are being very generous in their time.
Yes, Brianna.
Thank you, Mayor Buckland, uh, yeah, I just wanted to chime in, it's really common for, um, consulting entities, including S S G, to do preliminary evaluations at no cost. Um, so for example, uh, we toured all those plants and had, had some sit downs with Corinne at no cost to, to the town of Peonia. I did not pass that along and it's, it's because in order to write a decent contract, you have to know what you're getting into. Um, and we certainly could not have possibly known, we knew there were repairs, that's all we knew. As we dig in, we understand the level of repairs and the level of engagement that is going to require. And it's going to be far more than S S G's engagement, it really is going to take a team.
Yes, Corinne.
I'm just going to let you know that I did go back and look at the emails that, um, I've gotten from Filter Tech and they haven't sent the actual cost yet, but for, um, the full day that they were at the plant yesterday and the work, they were estimating about $1,800 and that was two people. A full, for a full day and that includes the repair, the parts in repair. But now that they've been there and they're reviewing that along with the matrix, they are going to send, um, an updated and accurate accounting.
Their, their billing rate looked to me to be around 105 a person on the repair, I, I did the math. Because I, I know that people will be able to do it for less than S S G.
All right, Paige, you had your hand up.
Thank you, um, so this sort of begs a question. Is because Travis was licensed by the state, is there some responsibility on Travis's part to the state? Um, that he was not necessarily performing the duties that he was licensed to do? Is there anything we need to report? Um, this just, it seems quite, quite irresponsible.
Um, yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm reluctant to, to place blame on a single entity, however, um, certainly he certainly didn't quite check all the boxes for what an O R C is supposed to do. He couldn't have, he had too much on his plate, so that's where I get into the, the difficulty with, with blaming him. Um, he's a known entity to the regulators. And, um, I think if he were to continue down the path, they would probably pull his license, that's my personal opinion. I am not a regulator, I am not a liar. Um, and I don't think he could have done it better because he didn't have the staff to do it better, one person's never going to do it all, it was guaranteed he wasn't yelled to at all. So, uh, yeah, I, I don't know, I, if honestly, if I was a town, I would leave that up to the state. You got bigger fish to fry. And unless you think he's got a lot of money and can help you pay for it, which I don't think he does. Uh, you know, uh, I think as a discussion with a lawyer, I don't know. Um, all we can say is what we see now and what we see now is absolutely not compliant.
Yeah, Paige.
Sorry, it took me a while to get the mute button. Um, I wanted to thank Brianna for stepping in, because first of all, it's really tough to take on something like that, especially over the holidays. Um, I think there's some culpability all around here. Um, we as a board have not actually physically been able to go to these plants and see, we had a video about it, but I think, um, listening to trustee Smith, Smith about observing the repair uh, week and a half ago and how much you learned from that really inspires me to think about, we really need to see these things that we're voting on. And I welcome the new trustees that will be running for the election to join us um, for a tour, because we really need something like that, but we are culpable as a board about not providing the adequate staffing. We saw a J D S Hydro report months and months and months ago that said we needed at least three people in overseeing that and that, I don't even think that was adequate and that was just the water. So, you know, we are where we are right now and I think putting a lot of blame and pointing a lot of fingers, it is, it's important that we're clear on what we need to prevent happening in the future, but we need to get our priorities, like what has to happen in the next week? What has to happen in the next two weeks? What has to happen as far as staffing and how can we get that staffing that we need onboard, um, even if it's hiring people on a temporary basis? I think that's really important, so getting those things clear, I think, is the most beneficial thing we can do as a council. And, um, you know, that's, those are my thoughts right now, I hope that helps.
Steve, anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing from the board, I'm going to open it up to the public, please raise your hand. Yes, Thomas Mark.
Thanks, Mary, I want to be, uh, have a quick question regarding procedure. I see on the agenda, it says that I'm allowed to speak one time, is that at all, should I ask all my questions at once and then be quiet or am I allowed to dialogue?
No, you're allowed to ask your questions, get them answered and have, ask another question about how many questions do you have, Thomas?
I have at least three and then a couple of statements.
Okay.
First, uh, to Brianna, um, when you found the, uh, mouse droppings, cluttered equipment, et cetera, uh, non-related equipment in the sewer plant, uh, did you find a bunch of beer in the fridge?
I didn't find beer, I found Mountain Dew.
Okay, thank you. Um, what are the dangers of over or under chlorination of our drinking water?
Uh, the, uh, is a permit requirement to be able to discharge to waters of the state?
Uh, no, I don't mean the sodium thiosulfate, I mean the, uh, the actual, uh, the chlorination.
You're asking about, can you hit the question, I'm sorry?
Sorry, what are the dangers of over or under chlorination, uh, in the drinking water system?
I'm sorry, I'm all about those fish.
Yeah.
Uh, the, in, in your drinking water, under chlorination allows bacteria. So most of the standards that you look at, um, for drinking water, it's really about eliminating bacteria. If you look at the state regs, they say, oh, you'll have, um, a minimum of point two. Um, but when you look at your own permit, your minimum level is supposed to be point five for the water going out to town. Um, so that, that's the hazard of the situation that we encountered of having the chlorine too low. Um, certainly, you know, the hazards of too much is like, is like drinking bleach, if you want to go to the ultimate extreme of it. In general, operators try to keep it between, um, somewhere above the permit limit for a minimum and two. Um, and, uh, if you get, if you get, if you're down there in the lower levels, um, like point four, point three, you start to get up the pool smell from chloramines developing. So there's some odor, uh, in addition to the bacteria issue, there's some odor things that people notice at different chlorine levels.
Okay, uh, so to, to summarize, um, the failures in operation affect public health as well as environmental health of our river.
Public health for the distribution system, the other failure at the water treatment plant.
Pump failure, correct, okay. Um, so, uh, I think those are my questions for Brianna, thank you. For the board in general, I guess, and the mayor, um, I'm wondering what you intend to do regarding the various failures that have led to this? And for the public record, I, I, just so you know, Brianna, I am a, uh, on the advisory water committee, um, for town. Um, so, I'm, I knew your answers, but I just wanted to hear you say them. Because what, where we're at, in my opinion, um, was entirely preventable. Well, Travis has been failing his O R C B certification consistently for three years. And the plant has been failing in various ways for three years. And to my understanding, it is the town manager's responsibility to manage staff, hire new staff and hold staff accountable to completing their tasks. So the reasons that we're not aware of the state of the plants or the information shortcomings, the staffing shortcomings are bad management. And we are seeing the costs of bad management pile up. So I would like to know what the board intends to do about the management of town.
Do you have another statement? Do you have another statement, Thomas?
That's my final question.
Okay, well, the board is not going to answer that at this point in time. So, um, who else from the public would like to speak?
Hello? Hello?
I who is, who is this?
This is Suzanne. I don't know. I've never done Zoom on a computer before, so.
Um, okay.
Okay, so can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is new to me. I'd like to point out, it hasn't been due to lack of public comment that um, these things have been happening. If you remember, the public was very adamant about Travis not passing his tests. And um, there was a lot of public um, comment about that and displeasure. And I think the board had ample warning about some of these things, and I feel like um, Travis was very protected. Um, I remember there was going to be a plant tour at one time. The board wanted to see the plant. Tammy Meck wanted to see the plant. And instead, it was recorded. You got some video artists to record the tour of the plant, and the public and the board saw it. And I think you've been allowing, you've been facilitating this. And it upsets me terribly because I think we've been talking, we've been mentioning our displeasure for quite some time about how things have been run. And we're treated with scorn by certain board members, by the newspapers as being nitpicky. This has been coming, and I think we've seen it as a public, and I think the board has been blind to it, and I certainly hope you take action about this. I believe when you're looking at staffing levels, um, I mean, why wasn't this more um, more of a concern, you know, from administrators or Travis saying, I need help, I need help? I don't think Travis wanted the help. If you remember, we've had good people gotten rid of if if they're too qualified because they just make other staff members look bad. So that's a judgment call um, on my part, but that's how I I see it. But I really think when you're looking at staffing, you need to look at the administrator too, to really see that you are hiring an administrator who can administer the staff that takes care of this huge system. Our town is in, um, you know, we have massive public works projects coming up or that we're in the middle of. We need someone who has proven experience taking on this type of work and seeing through projects like this because we cannot we cannot have people learning on the job. It's it's costing us. It's going to bankrupt us if it hasn't already. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes. Oh, there was a hand. Oh, Michelle.
Yep, thank you. This is Michelle Patterson. This is infuriating, to put it mildly, and I know it is for all of you as well. And I hope that there are plans in the works for a bigger conversation with a future, uh, meeting very soon about how we got to this point and how we keep it from happening again from a management standpoint. Um, beyond that, I I hope that the board and staff realize that it's very important for the public to understand what's happened here and the impact that this has on us on everyone in the community. And I hope that you will be as transparent as possible with any communication related to this issue. I want to see all the numbers. I want to see the emails. I want to see reports back and forth to the state. I think all of that needs to be made public if you have any hope of winning back any trust from your community at this point.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else from the public? Okay, I don't see anything else. Um, I guess, shall we have a motion? To accept change order?
I move that we approve the.
Hello?
Excuse me?
Hello, can I make a comment?
Yes, she would have raised her hand, please. Who is this?
This is girl Bruno. I'm sorry, I'm unfamiliar with the technique on the telephone. Uh, is this my turn to speak?
Yes, it is now your turn to speak.
Thank you. Um, well, I I've just throwed a couple of things and hope for an answer uh, uh, after I hang up. But I still haven't heard anything about the clock plant, which is specifically excluded from this contact contract modification. Uh, and um, I I think there should be some kind of that during this meeting, please. And uh, uh, I think Dave uh, is correct in taking some responsibility. The board has willingly suspended critical thought in terms of uh, dealing with the town's management, and the board has been actively deceived. Uh, so that's my comment, uh, and please, will someone talk about the clock plant?
Brianna, would you like to address the clock plant, please?
Sure, um, the state records has the clock plant as offline and non-functional. It is not approved to uh, distribute water. Um, and so since we're auditing plants to try and figure out uh, you know, what needs to be fixed, that's pretty different from bringing a plant back online. Um, it's something that we could certainly discuss. Uh, but we're 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 just trying to get your samples in and keep your chlorine good and uh figure out what we can do to make sure that system's going to keep running for you guys, that the one that is.
Okay, thank you, Brianna. All right. Anyone else? This is the last chance.
This is Suzanne Watson.
Oh, Suzanne, you only get to speak once. Thank you.
I I thought you said there was more than once when Thomas asked in the beginning.
All in one shot. He spoke all in one shot.
I, well, I just want to say the clock plant is our town water. I'm tired of my water pressure being eighty-five and ninety because we're on this higher plant. We are meant to be run off the lower plant, not the upper plant. So you really need to talk about this as a board. That this can damage pipes down here in town. The water pressure should never be that high for us. Thank you.
All right. Okay, can we get a motion, please?
Hello?
I think we heard trustee Bundinger make a motion.
Yes, trustee Bundinger, would you like to repeat your motion?
I move that we approve the change order.
Do I have a second?
Can we have a specific, a specific motion, please? Not just approve the change order, because that's how it's going to appear, and then it's please, a specific motion. Thank you.
Okay, Karen, unmute yourself.
I move that we approve the change order to add the uh, observation of repairs for SSG. An amount of seventy-five hundred, or was it seventy-two hundred dollars?
How about Karen?
Yes.
There's a suggestion at the top of the agenda summary form.
Oh, God.
How about an emotion to approve solid sciences geoscience LLC? Just read that whole part.
If I can find it. Oh, darn, I've just moved something on my computer.
What's, okay, but how about somebody else?
Somebody else.
I've got it in front of me. If you'd like me to read it, is the motion?
Yes, please.
Please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that to approve solid solution geosciences LLC Peonya Water Project Number zero one eight zero zero dash zero zero one zero zero underscore C zero C, uh, capital O, one, a change order to scope of work with the addition of task fifty in the amount of seventy-two hundred dollars.
Thank you, Paige. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, we are at the end of our agenda. Thank you, everyone, for coming to the meeting, and thank you especially Brianna for being here. And we look forward to seeing you again. All right. This meeting is adjourned.